Everybody awake now?
I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome all, everybody in the audience. We have a good audience today and as well as those who are live streaming. We have a full council here except for Rich McHugh, who is excused today. We also have Cliff Gravier, our town manager, here. Terry Teeman, our assistant town manager, is here. Raylene Menominee, our town clerk, is here. And Will Wharton, our head of IT. If we could all stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held November the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of the executive session held November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the financial report and tax adjustment list number two, Mrs. Keel.
The Budget and Finance Committee met on Thursday, January sixteenth, to review the third quarter of the current year and to discuss the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, which will begin on April first. The results of the first three quarters of the current year are good. Revenue should end the year around two hundred thousand over budget, less than usual due to a decline in real estate transfer taxes and building permit revenues after several years of record-setting numbers. Operating expenses are higher than in prior years, mainly from higher wages needed to keep the staffing at the correct levels for the police department and the beach patrol. We also replaced computer equipment and improved the bandstand performance quality and safety. The first draft of the new budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six was discussed in detail. Townwide revenues are currently budgeted at fourteen point seven million. Operating costs are twelve point seven million and capital and debt budget is four point two million. The committee discussed and will likely recommend a seventeen percent increase to hourly parking rates and a twenty percent increase to water usage fees. The parking increase is needed to cover the cost increases that we have seen in summer season operations, mainly wages for summer hires, bandstand performances, and safety precautions. The water rate increase is needed since the current rates per gallon have not been increased in ten years. The proposed twenty percent increase will result in less than a hundred dollars being billed additionally per year to eighty-four percent of our properties. The committee will meet again on February twentieth to discuss the second draft of the budget. I move that we approve this unaudited report.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Announcements and...
I gotta do tax adjustment, too.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Tax adjustment list number two, Mrs. Keel.
The council has received a list of about twenty-three properties that are having their taxes adjusted. This is mainly due to constructions or modifications to the homes. I move that we approve tax adjustment list number two.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Announcements, recognition of visitors, any public comment? There is public comment on anything and on anything, please let me know. And there is the opportunity to, for public comment, to anything we discuss later on at that time, so I just want to make that, that one clear. As far as public announcements go, I did want to thank Julie Maluski and all the town personnel who worked with the Christmas seasonal events. It was truly a season to remember. It was, so many things were going on in December and when Santa arrived and all the kids and it was quite a year. It seems to expand every year. Thank you, Julie, and, and everybody. Advancing onto reports, first one will be report from the Fourth of July Committee, Mr. Lawrence. Yes, please.
Thank you. I am not Bruce Frye. He's there to supervise. Thank you so much. We held our first two organizational meetings. The first one was November the nineteenth, the second one was January the fifteenth. We have sixteen volunteers this year on the committee, lots of familiar faces, Bruce, Ron, Jerry, Patrick, and also Rosemary. And Scott Bell has stepped up to become the vice chair or the vice, to assist me as part of the committee. In our, oh, and we have two new people, two new recruits, which is really, really good. In our first two meetings, we've set the theme for the T-shirt and the parade. This year, that will be traditions thrive in twenty-five. We've narrowed our T-shirt design and working with Julie Maluski, we'll finalize our next, finalize that design at our next meeting, which is scheduled for March the fourth. New for two thousand twenty-five, we're working to accept credit cards, working to accept credit cards. We have all the plans in place to hopefully get that done, fingers crossed. We do believe that will have a major increase in our, our sales of our T-shirts if we're able to collect funds through Apple Pay and, and credit cards, debit cards. Scott Bell is leading a task force to revamp and revitalize the parade award and prize process. It was a, it was time to review that, and I think the, the task force has come up with some really good ideas that will streamline and make it a lot more engaging for people to want to participate. There's more to come on that, but that's it. That's my report. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Fourth of July Parade is quite an endeavor. As you, as you noted, there are a lot of members of that committee and it takes every single one of them to pull it off. Good luck. You do. Okay, report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. I, I understand we have a PowerPoint today.
For change. Actually, before I do that, I want to, I, I didn't get a chance to do a couple of recognitions. I just wanted to thank the Public Works for the response for the snowstorm we had. I thought it was outstanding. I know it's not perfect for everybody, but I know they gained, came through our neighborhood fairly early before things hardened up, froze, so gave people a chance to dig out, and I think it was just outstanding. So I just want to thank them. The other thing I wanted to do is just recognize our emergency response services. You know, this stuff doesn't really hit you until you have that, but we had, literally the night of the snowstorm, one of our neighbor, our neighbors over for dinner, and he passed out, literally before we began dinner. And the emergency team, the Public Works team, the police department, we're literally there within minutes. And, and, you know, again, these things don't touch you as much until that happens to you, and to see their professionalism, empathy, dedication was really outstanding. So I just wanted to, and how they work together, right? How they work together, given showing up during a snowstorm, right? So it was just outstanding. So I'd like to go in and just give you a brief update on the pedestrian, or the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. Again, I always like to thank the people and Diane's here. We really have, Teresa and I are really fortunate enough to have a great team, folks who are really energized, have a lot of passion to try to prevent hurt, pain, and suffering in this neighborhood of ours, both for ourselves as well as our guests. So just outstanding work. Back in, latter part of last year, we did a little bit of a refresh in terms of what we wanted to focus on next year, or next year. Next year is now today, right? Twenty twenty-five. So these were the major efforts. I'm not going to go through each one of them. Most of them are things that we've had a lot of success with in previous years that we want to do again going forward. So those are the ones that the team came up with and said, these are the ones that we want to try to focus on and do again. But then we had a workshop in October where we really tried to get a lot of broad-based input from the community. We literally had about twenty-five people here. Some of you were here for that. Some folks called in, some folks shared their perspectives, which I thought was really successful. So again, it's just getting people who live in our community to share the things that are important to them that we ought to work on. And so we got a great list. This list is, we're not going to be able to work on all of these things, but the point was we captured all the ideas and then what we're going to be doing in our next meeting in February is trying to cull this down to the things that we can do in addition to the previous list, okay? And what we did is tried to break things down into three major areas. One were things that are a little bit bigger in nature that sort of, you know, we sort of call it bricks and mortar, a little bit more extensive efforts, if you will, more planning involved with some of those. So you'll, you'll see some of those, and some of these actually we're already working on, and, and I think we'll talk about a little bit later. The other ones we had were administrative kind of options that we can work on, changing procedures, doing things a little bit differently. And the last were things around engagement, behavior change. And again, had a really broad-based list of ideas and thoughts. So again, we're going to come up with looking at these, trying to prioritize as a team, and then sort of work on our action plan as we move into rest of two thousand twenty-five. But again, just want to thank everybody who participated in that. This list will not go away. Hopefully, we'll check off some of these and that'll, the things that are left will be our ongoing stuff as we carry into the year. So the last piece, Teresa?
So we started this program last year, and it was such a big success, we're doing it again. It's, we call it the Learning and Sharing Event. What we do is invite representatives from all of the coastal towns. This year, we'll also invite Millville and Ocean View and just share ideas. What are you guys doing to enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety? What's working, what's not working, and what can we do together? So it was, it was a great event last year and, and we're happy to host it one more time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the list, Cultural and Historical Affairs Committee, Mrs. Galiff.
The Cultural and Historical Affairs Committee held a meeting on Tuesday, January fourteenth. January is our planning month, and discussions were focused on possible projects and events as well as our March and April cultural evenings. Currently, we're looking for areas throughout town that would be appropriate for a pop-up library. Library would be located in the right of way. Suggestions for locations are welcome, so if you have one, we'd love to hear from you. Please email us at shack, C-H-A-C, at townofbethanybeach.com. Total number of visitors in two thousand twenty-four to the Dinkar Irving Museum was five hundred ninety-one. Museum is currently only open on Saturdays from eleven to one. However, we do have private tours that are available for groups of ten to fifteen. This past Wednesday, we had a tour for a group of high school students from Georgetown. So that's it. That's my report.
Thank you. I think the budget and finance, we've got it covered already. That was kind of covered earlier. So next one on the list is report from the town manager, Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, Council, to echo your comments earlier, I would really like to, to thank, thank the staff for the great job they do for all holiday, holiday events. Public Works participates a good bit, our staff here in the building, but most especially, as you mentioned, Julie Maluski, just with all the balls that she has in the air to do such a almost flawless job with, with those events. It's an incredible, and a tribute to, to the great, great member of the team that she is. Like to say a thank you to Public Works. Public Works are a little out of practice with snow removal since we only have snow events every three or four years, but they were on it the day before the snow began. They, they geared up their machinery, they were ready to go, and they begin the, the task of plowing our nineteen miles of streets. They did a great job. One of the things that happens, though, and it probably took them a good forty-eight, almost into the third day, to get everything clear for streets the way they wanted to. By the time they get to the sidewalks, Bethany Beach and the boardwalk, Bethany Beach is the victim of its own popularity. There are so many people who are, while it's snowing, matter of fact, it was almost impossible to plow the horseshoe because of parked cars during the snow. By the time they get to the, the time where they can get to the boardwalk or get to the sidewalks near the boardwalk, hundreds, maybe even thousands, of visitors have wanted to come to the beach to look at the ocean and see the snow. And the compacting of that snow, especially in colder weather, when it doesn't warm enough, enough for them to move it later, becomes really problematic, especially on the wooden boards and the boardwalk. We could take some heavy shovels, we could try to use some of the more high-powered snow blowers that we have, but in doing that, we damaged the surface of our very, very expensive boardwalk. We would hope that people just take a little bit of time and maybe just a little bit of patience to wait till the conditions are better to walk as opposed to coming and putting themselves with the possibility, confronting the possibility of slipping when just a couple of days of waiting might make the, the trip more safe for them if they're concerned about those things. But they do the best, they've done, done a great job. As a point of illustration, Rehoboth has the same problem in removing snow from its boardwalk. This is the cam on Rehoboth's boardwalk right now, and they haven't had much more luck than we have had in snow removal on the boardwalk. Moving on, pedestrian safety, in line with what Mickey's talking about, we have a number of different initiatives that we're looking at. One is the, the new crosswalk that we'll have at the north side of one and twenty-six here. That work is underway. In conjunction with that work, we are going to put a formal entrance to the park here at the southeast corner of the park. And in other meetings, I have given you all, council members, a diagram of what that entry might look like. We went back to the landscape engineer, and the engineers doing the project asked for a couple of revisions, and in your packet today, you'll see some revisions of what that entrance might look like. The sidewalk immediately adjacent to the Route one and twenty-six is a bit wider, and the path has changed a couple of other dimensions, but I think it will be more user-friendly as a result of that. Another initiative that is moving ahead fairly quickly, and we might hopefully see happen here before summer, is the addition of a flashing pedestrian beacon at Treetop Lane on Route twenty-six in the vicinity of the Phoebos. That will be a new crosswalk there, and in the crosswalk will be a, an island, a concrete embankment and an island, a little, little sanctuary, if you will, while you're trying to cross Route twenty-six, and there'll be another beacon in that, in that little median there. But that work is proceeding, and I think we'll, we'll move ahead probably before summer. We have had some issues with our boardwalk in, in, we've discovered here this past summer season, most especially the ancient bulkhead that separates the plaza area from the boardwalk itself is beginning to deteriorate to the point in time that the, the earth and the sand and the clay that it holds in and keeps from migrating towards the beach is failing. We have had an assessment done with our engineers of, of that area to see how we can fix that, and in doing that, we've also asked them to do an assessment of the entire boardwalk, the structure. We know we have some issues, most especially with support choice that may be need, need to be taken care of here in the off-season, and we're waiting on, on a report from them to tell us what needs to be done, most especially in the plaza area. And we're also waiting on a reassessment of the value of the boardwalk. Our last assessment was done almost two decades ago, and the replacement cost for the boardwalk at that point in time was eight million dollars. It will be interesting to see what today's cost is for the replacement of the boardwalk, which is always of interest to us because our insurance does not cover the replacement of the boardwalk in any sort of a storm event. So that, that responsibility would be totally ours along with other things. The state of Delaware, in the waning hours of its legislative session, increased, added a short-term rental tax to its, to its tax base of four point five percent, and that is now the law of the land. We'll be sending letters out to both renters and realtors advising them of the, of that new rate. In those letters, there'll be an access to further information that you can look links up or go to the QR code and, and run that to see what that's all about. But that does bring total rental rate here in town, with the town's existing seven percent to eleven and a half percent. So we've already begun to hear some, some issues with that, but that was something the towns lobbied against because of the impact on beach communities, but we're on successful doing in legislature this year. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Cliff. Any questions for Cliff?
Cliff, do, do we, the town, receive any of that new four and a half percent rental tax, or is that all the state?
All the state.
Thank you.
Do I understand it then? Do we collect, we actually collect it from the real estate agents and then pay it to the state, or are they, they're, they're responsible for passing it on? That's good.
Okay. Thank you, Cliff.
Mayor.
Before we go on to old business and new business, I'd like to state that there will be an opportunity for the public to address questions on agenda items after initial council discussion and before council votes. First item will be under old business, discussion, consideration, and possible vote on the town council procedure and procurement manual. Mr. Morris.
Protocol manual. Unfortunately, the protocol manual is not ready for prime time right now. It has been reformatted, and we are in the process of finishing it, so I will have a report for next month.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morris. Do we need to do a motion to delay that, or we just delay it? Why don't we do a motion and go ahead?
I'd like to make a motion that we delay the vote on the protocol manual to the February meeting.
Okay, we'll finalize it at that time. And we have a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item, discussion, consideration, and possible vote on the committee guidelines and standing committees. Mr. Shepley.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, you have in your materials that were distributed before the meeting a revised copy of the Bethany Beach Committee Guidelines. We had hoped that we could provide you with a, I think it's called a redline version, so you could see exactly what we think should be, we, I think, should be removed and what we can add, but we weren't able to do that, so you have the finalized document. And I think you also got a copy of Councilman McHugh's requested changes. Briefly, what, what I tried to do is sort of standardize it and make it consistent, and a lot of Councilman McHugh's changes were to that effect. In addition, we deleted two committees that we don't use anymore, don't have anymore. The Board of Assessment's role was taken over by council a couple of years ago, so it doesn't exist, and the Telecommunication Committee was disbanded last year. We added two committees, one of which is new and one of which I think had just fallen through the cracks, but the Board of Adjustment is now in the guidelines as well as the new Police Accountability Committee. We, I reordered the committees, and I put them in alphabetical order within type of committee. So we have three mandated committees that are, are required by the state, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, and the new Police Accountability Committee. They are listed first in alphabetical order and identified as mandated committees, and then the town has eight standing committees that are listed after that. And we have no ad hoc, currently have no ad hoc and special committees. Those are the changes that were made in it. So I would suggest there were no substantive changes other than the committees that we deleted and added, and the rest was some formatting, some grammar changes. I'd like to thank Councilman McHugh for his suggestions. Mike Loftus helped with some ideas for the Board of Adjustment. Rosemary Hardeman offered some suggestions, and Raylene did an outstanding job of creating the document that you have before you. With all that, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we accept the proposed changes and the final draft currently of the Bethany Beach Committee Guidelines.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Pat, I, when we went through this, I, I really thought that the budget and finance would have been one of those that would have fallen under the state mandated, but I guess it doesn't, so.
No.
It's not.
It's not required by the state.
I know. I didn't know that until we went through this process.
And, you know, part of the reason of identifying the committees of the type of committee was for that. So you can look up a committee and say, oh, that's required by the state, a mandated committee, or that's a standard committee.
Yeah, and we might just clarify that the Police Accountability Committee is a state mandated, it's a new state mandated committee that is to be formed, and it is, it has a specific structure so that there is a member of the clergy on it, a member, a member of police association, a member of the business community, a citizen, and I forget who the fifth one is. But, I mean, it's pretty, pretty much a mandated and dictated committee, and, and we've actually come up with some great members on that committee, so.
You're right.
Okay. Do, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can proceed on to new business, discussion and consideration and possible vote on the appointment of Frank Myers as the Chair of the Audit Committee.
Mayor? Due to the resignation of Jack Gordon from the Audit Committee, we have a vacancy at the chair position. I have provided a bio to all the council members of Frank Myers, who is, he, as, as you know, Frank is also a current member of the committee. He's a highly qualified person with a, with a tremendous resume in audit, in the audit field, and he comes highly recommended by the previous chair. So I would... So I would, I recommend the nomination of Mr. Myers to the Chair of the Audit Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add my same thoughts as Jack Gordon's, Frank owns the house next to us. I've got to know him over the years.
I didn't know that.
And he's, he's highly qualified.
Yeah.
He's been a participating member of the Audit Committee, and he's more than qualified to lead that committee.
Well, I had a great discussion with him, and his resume is outstanding.
Yep.
So, okay. Do we have a vote then on, in favor of Mr. Myers?
Aye.
Next business. Discussion and consideration for possible vote on the appointment of Jonathan Johnson on the Board of Adjustments. Mayor.
You all also have a copy of the resume of Jonathan Johnson. He's a full-time resident of Bethany, comes from a high-level government contracting career. He comes highly recommended by Jerry Morris, by Bob Rush, and by Rosemary Hardeman, all of whom know him personally. So I have interviewed Jonathan, Mike Loftus, the Chair of the Board, met with Mike as well, with Jonathan as well, and interviewed him in person. We all agree Jonathan would be a great add to the Board of Adjustment. I'd like to nominate Jonathan Johnson, Jonathan Johnson to the Board of Adjustment. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick word. I know you said personal recommendation, but I cannot say how much Jonathan loves this town. He's very, he's been very involved, and I, I look forward to seeing him get even more involved.
And as a neighbor, he's a great neighbor. Are we complimenting our neighbors now? Is that so?
But he's not an expert.
You want to compliment him as a neighbor?
Is he next-door neighbor? Because my guy was a next-door neighbor.
He's across the street from me, and he's around the street from Rosemary, so, you know.
I just want to say, I, I'm going with anybody that puts a fun fact in his resume. That was nice touch.
That, that was the thing that jumped out at me. Literally, the, the first statement is Jonathan's the luckiest guy in the world, having retired early from a rewarding career to a beautiful Delaware shore with a wonderful wife. I mean, that, that's awesome, right? Fantastic.
I thought we had broken up this canal power group.
It's only getting bigger.
Not yet. We're still adding. We're still recruiting from the canal.
All right.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the last item on the agenda today is discussion, consideration, and possible vote on a resolution announcing the town, a town's desire to borrow money for the purpose of a new clarifier for the water treatment plant, and also set a date and time for a public hearing on said resolution. That would be Monday, February the 17th, 2025, at 1:00 PM. Following, just to clarify, following the public hearing, there will be a second resolution to hold a special election for the purpose of voting for or against the water clarifier construction, and this would probably occur in April or May. This will precede, this will be preceded by a public notice of a special election, and then the election will take place 20 to 60 days after that. Mr. Gravier, would you like to discuss the technical aspects of the?
Certainly. And the public, to be specific, the public hearing will be to consider and to hear comment regarding the town, town's intent to have a referendum to borrow money. Right now, the estimated cost for the clarifier, the construction of the clarifier itself and not the security buildings, is $3.9 million, and it would be over a 20-year span. There is a detailed explanation of, of the whole issue of borrowing and an explanation of what the clarifier does with some great illustrations of the existing clarifier and some locations on the town's website. We also mailed it out via our email list here earlier this week, I believe on Wednesday. And if you haven't read it and you have any interest in knowing what this is all about, I would suggest you do it. The clarifier is an integral, significant part to our water treatment process. We are fortunate in that we, we, our wells are deeply, deep confined aquifers. Both of our aquifers are, are, are deep, they are confined, which is very, very important. They are not subject to any infiltration of surface chemicals, none of the PFOAs or PFOs chemicals that you constantly read about in water systems. But the negative with these deeply confined aquifers is that they contain natural minerals. And ours, our aquifers contain natural, the natural mineral of iron in extraordinary quantities. So one of the things we have to do when we pump it from the earth is to treat that iron and then let the iron settle, and then pump the clear water, the clean water, absent the iron, into our system, treat it, and then pump it into our storage areas and deliver it to your homes. But the removal of the iron is, is very significant, it's something we have to do, and it's done in a clarifier. Our clarifier is 30-plus years old. It's reached the, the end of its real useful life and our ability to maintain it successfully, and it has some older design issues that we've been unable to design out of, out of it, if you will. It's a, it's a monster of a piece of construction. It's 56 feet wide, 16 feet tall, in a massive concrete circle. We looked at a couple of different options of what we might be able to do to remove iron, different systems, and what we've decided to do is construct two smaller clarifiers, about 40 feet in diameter, that would roughly sit in the same footprint, so we wouldn't have a massive extension of, of the footprint of the clarifiers within the Water Department plant. The two larger clarifiers, or the idea of going with a larger clarifier, another large clarifier, would have meant we would have had to expand the fence line within the plant itself. But two smaller clarifiers keep it in a small, small footprint. They give us needed redundancy, which we don't have now, and our engineers are very happy with that kind of construction. They like the idea, and our Water Department staff also likes it. Something it also does that we don't have now, and if you do look at the, the, the link where it describes and actually shows the clarifier, you'll see that the clarifier is open. Our new clarifiers will be smaller, and they'll be put in an enclosed structure, which in terms of today's world and security is something that we need to do. So that's some basic facts on the clarifier, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gravier. Do we have a motion to prepare the resolution for the town's desire to borrow the money for the clarifier and set the date for the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion amongst the council? Does the public have anything they'd like to question or discuss? There will be a public hearing, as you all heard, so there'll be plenty of time to ask questions. I believe there's going to be some more details on the, on the exact construction and how it will work and, you know, the particulars of it, so. Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That concludes our meeting today. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So thank you, everybody, for attending, and those listening online. Stay safe this winter with all our snow and cold, and let's hope that spring comes soon. Thank you.